Start our meeting today, a board meeting. And we have a number of things going on, so we'll continue to, we'll continue to do those things. And we'll go ahead and start our meeting with the road car. Call it order, RoKaw, please.
Chairman Henry?
Here.
Vice Chair Parks?
Present.
Commissioner Ovachowski? Your Commissioner McFarland?
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Here.
Commissioner Salem?
Here.
Commissioner Van Anker?
Here.
Thank you everybody standing here. Since we have a rather long agenda, who, for approval of the agenda?
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. May I have RoKaw?
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovachowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Anker?
Yes.
Okay, are there any public comments on the agenda, only? Hearing none. We're gonna have a presentation from Milletta and Company, so...
All right, Jason, we are ready for you.
All right. I fully understand probably not everybody's very favorite piece of your meetings. I'll try to keep my excitement down. I'm presenting your audit, I know you guys are busy, so try not to talk in a way that I can get here. So what I'd like to do is kind of obviously give you the results of the audit. Obviously, if you have any questions, that's why I'm here. I'll answer whatever I can, and I'll try not to bore you with the process. But here we are, we're presenting the results. Hopefully, everybody can see there and hear me. Of the December 31st, 2021 audit. Jump to the audit report. Everything I'm jumping to is just sections of the actual act report. I had nothing special here, I'm just highlighting certain items coming on from the payroll page. But I'm gonna jump to the back, and here we have the summary of the audit results. It's kind of what we're paid to perform. We issued an opinion on your financial statements. That is unmodified, that means it's a clean opinion, there are no findings. There are no issues that we want to report to you all. Meaning you maintain a solid system of controls. And hopefully, the results of the audit, numbers themselves, are in line with what management's been reporting to you all along. If they weren't, then we wouldn't probably say such. So we're saying no's to their, no's to the good thing in this case, that means we find, we found no issues to know of. Secondary to our audit is an audit on your federal programs. We also issued an opinion here, also unmodified, making it a clean opinion, with similar notations, saying that there are no findings reported. This is the third year in a row now with no findings. The last year of audit findings was 2018. That is clear votes, and continues to operate within the regulate as we, you know, assess and attack. So that's really the bulk of it. No real issues, solid in our organization. I'm gonna go a little bit through the financial results and hope that, again, I'll try not to take a long time, I know you guys are busy, guys. A statement, a summary of all the money you took in versus the cost of all the programs. Real quick, I'm just gonna tell you now that I'm just gonna look at the primary government column here. That is basically who you are as a Move to Work Agency. The gods of accounting want us to kind of report what they call discreetly presented. Just for you all to know, those are your entities that you control and own, okay? Such as Oakwood Trace, such as, you know, New Haven, some of these newer ones, Oakfield, that you do control, but you don't 100% own. What we're gonna put that aside, those are our own property office. We're just looking at the centerpiece here, bringing in $18 million, consistent with previous years, et cetera. So, but I'm not looking at the center here. And for operating from the law, typically, we add back depreciation, but I'm gonna say, you operated a million dollar surplus this year? That is, I would say, pretty similar as years past. But again, the way your organization works, you get a lot of funding from HUD. Sometimes you get that all in bulk, so this kind of goes up and down. This is what you would expect as a normal operating year. It has sufficient surplus so that you can, again, reinvest in some of the activities that you want to do. And you guys seem to always be doing activities. This is required to do that, right? I'm just gonna point out two little things on here. Housing assistance payments, your payments pay huge amount of the organization's cost. That increases a million dollars year on year. We'll talk why in a bit. Basically leasing versus the cost of housing. And then a couple quick things, ad being the only other cost that's increasing, and that's because you're breaking into new programs. So you have new programs paying for that cost. They have very good cost controls. Costs have been flat for years now, or it's been flat and you can keep that with inflation. Some pretty good cost controls, and consistent revenue generation, which is what you want to see. Getting connected, so that's a good operating result for the year. If we look at who you are and how you accumulate it since inception, this is the balance sheet. I'm not gonna go through all these numbers here. I'm just gonna play it at the top. You have $4.2 million in unrestricted cash. If I compare that to who you are as an organization, just to put this in perspective, it comes to $5 million a year to run your organization. You have $4.2 million left over in the bank account, and basically, 10 months' worth of operating, that's very healthy. In fact, anything over about six months would might be considered excess. So in my mind, on the board side, you have some leeway of about a million dollars or so, where, you know, you can continue to invest in programs and similar things, okay? So very good cash position. All that million dollar profit was in essence, an increase in cash, what in essence you want to see. What I'm telling you, you have a million dollar profit, and I'm going back and saying you did have a million dollars in increased cash. You probably kind of want to wonder what kind of trigger it is. But cash went up by almost exactly what I hoped, as I jumped in cash. So maybe one final thing, again, trying to keep this, hopefully I'm not going too fast, is now how do we evaluate how you're doing as an organization, right? Can we talk a little about the financials? That, you know, you made about a million dollars. Your financial is stable, you have more money in cash, which is sufficient for who you are. Is the people you serve, right? As a housing authority, the goal, the mission, is to serve, you know, as many as you can for the funds that you get. We're gonna point here, and you basically funded to serve 2,800 people a month, participants. You are now serving 2,600 of them. That is a 93% utilization. That is up from prior years, where it used to be in the 85% range. So again, you are utilizing the funds available to you, and you're increasing the services to those that need it. So there's that big increase this year, in comparison to last. I'm sure staff might know, with all the hard work of putting in progress based vouchers and leasing out a lot of these new units, that's accounts for a lot of that. But if you look here, there's still, there's still some room to grow. You know, your total amount, there's 33,000 that the year, so $2,800 a month, you got another $200, our sorry, $200 people that you can't serve with the funding that you get. Granted, that's not a limit, but it's certainly what HUD pays you to do, HUD funds. So it does show that you've gone from, I think you were serving 2,200 per month, just a short two years ago, in 2019. And you're basically in 2020, and now you've gone from 2,200 to 2,600, with basically the same budget. So again, you don't see those kind of numbers, those things when the numbers are in there, but you're serving 400 more people per month. And you're doing it within the funds that you're allotted, and still having a little bit of surplus, so you can continue to serve more. So very good things, but as far as challenges to conclude here, is, you know, as always, you're changing. You got staff turnover, you're doing a lot of new programs all the time. One of, I think, the biggest challenges we've seen from the audit perspective, and we'll call it risks, whatever, is that you have a lot of managed assets. So you have assets that are being managed by private manager companies, that you're relying on them to do some of the work for you, which is to maintain compliance over the federal programs. And they are always that proficient as you are at doing that. So staff have to kind of make sure that they're watching out for that. That they're constantly monitoring what management's doing, and making sure they adhere to the standards that House of thirty has required to perform to. I see that as probably an ongoing challenge for you all. And secondary on the development side, and very, and piece to kind of put that all together. That's it on this deal. I think I kept that as short as I can possibly ever do this, being I was promoting like you did. But certainly, no finding, well-run organization, you've done a lot this year. And there looks like there's room to continue to expand within controlled structure, obviously. That could be controlled growth, so you don't get out of control, and you keep taking, you know, the way that needs to be done. So certainly now, if there's any other questions as far as financial or the audit process or anything like that, I'm here to answer.
Just one question. You said that we're serving as many people as last year, but this year we're serving like 400 more than we had last year, correct?
Correct, I know.
So, so if we did serve more people, would we have to get more money, or how would that work, if we served more than 400?
Yes, so a lot of those were used reserves, but that's the last part, yes, absolutely, is HUD is holding on to money that you're entitled to. They're basically, part of their process is, they evaluate whether or not you need the funds. They're saying they're seeing that you have $4 million in your bank account, and they're saying, well, come back to me later. I know you earned the money, but you'll get it, type of thing. So yes, you are entitled to even more funds based on the performance you have. And that's what Miguel and I, the finance staff, have gone back and forth on, making sure you get credit. Because in my mind, you guys have to make sure you get credit for all the costs incurred to do this type of thing. And that's part of reporting to HUD, and that's part of what, you know, a couple of recommendations I have to hand my track in that. Making sure you're reporting everything that you've expected to do best, so that you get appropriately merged. And it's clear that they still owe you some money.
That's good, then, so we still have a new way to serve even more. Okay, that's good.
I have a question. Do you have any suggestions or recommendations so that we can continue to have a good check and balance system, and don't fall through the cracks? Any kind of way, any precautionary measures?
Well, you certainly, you have these check and balances. The biggest one would be staff turnover, understanding that sometimes the things that staff is doing is not necessarily communicated or passed along to the predecessors. So that ends up having an impact on new staff when they come in. But as far as the board's perspective, making sure that you're getting clear and explicit financial information and program information. Because that program information that's given to you by staff is what HUD is evaluating you on, and that's what they're paying on for performance. And as far as the board's role, that you have to be able to receive that. Receive things that look like they are directly prepared from the system, those kind of things. And we worked on that, thank you, again. These reports that you give to HUD, can I, can you tell me where you're getting the numbers from? Meaning that there's a risk report that, that, support that. Does that make sense, that I get too much?
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? All right, thank you, Jason. I think, I don't think anybody else had any other questions, so thank you, appreciate the explanation.
All right, all right, you take care all, have a good holiday.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you very much.
All right, all right, take care.
Good job, really.
Thank you. Good job to the entire HACC team.
Yeah, but they got two instructions, I can say you, passing down the network. The people that are doing what you're doing, passing down for them, we're gonna be a good team.
Thank you.
Look at that beat.
Check the balance, man. Yeah, check the balance, man.
Oh, check the balance, man.
Yeah.
Okay, we heard from Milletta and Company, their presentation, and I think everybody's pretty satisfied with that. We didn't have any further questions from the, from the other board members, and I was very satisfied with that report. I want to commend all of the staff and the team for everybody working together to have that report turn out the way it is. And like I said, everybody has to build on each other, we all step on each other's backs to get to the top, in a positive manner. So keep up the good work, and it's always good to have a good report from your auditors. So number five, we'll have approval of the minutes or regulations from October 27, 2022.
I know they approved the minutes from October 27, 2022.
It's been properly moved in second, RoKaw?
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovachowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Anker?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the approval of the minutes. Under new business, we have a couple resolutions. The first resolution is Resolution 22, 2022-08, approval of Move to Work 2023 Plan.
Okay, so this is, of course, just asking the board to approve our Move to Work Plan, so we can get it submitted to HUD. We did go over all the changes to the plan last month at our meet, or at our October meeting, and so we could just answer any questions if you have any. And if not, then...
If we don't have any questions, I think it was early last month, so you've had to prepare the plan, the packet. So assuming that you are one through it again, and hearing no questions, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of Resolution 22, 2022-08, approval of the Move to Work 2023 Plan.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, RoKaw?
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovachowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Anker?
Yes.
Thank you. The second resolution to the end of today is Resolution 2022-09, approval of the 2023 Holiday and Taylor Champagne County Operating Budget.
Miguel, would you like to come up and explain that?
So, as you can see, that is the budget for 2023. More than the numbers themselves, I wanted to mention a few things about the structure of the budget. This year, I thought that it would be better to understand our figures by slightly changing the structure of it. One of the changes was that there used to be the property budget, that included all the properties. Besides the fact that the report kept getting wider and wider, and actually, it was, it was harder to read, but I thought it would make sense to separate the blended from the discrete components. So basically, now the budget has one page for each one of the property budgets, sub-budgets, if I should call them that way, and of course, they merge into the general budget. That was one of the changes in the structure of the budget. The other one is versus sections for grants, among which Youth Build has a column, but as I mentioned yesterday, in the staff, in the staff Christmas meeting, Youth Build's world has really grown. It's been like, I'd say professionally, it's a nice challenge to have, to reflect all of this, because it just used to be Department of Labor. Now there's additional sorts of funding, Illinois Youth Build Coalition being the most important. There's also City of Champagne, and I assume all that City of Verdana. So I thought it was worthwhile creating a special, a special part of the budget for Youth Build, to show this a little more, more of a breakdown of this. And of course, as in the property budgets, all these merges to the master budget in one column for Youth Build. So that was a change, those were changes of the structure that I preferred to do for this 2023 year. The budget, as you can see, is in balance. What I did, what I incorporated this year, basically, when we, when we look at the real versus budget every month, we're talking about expenses, revenue and expenses. However, the budget also has the capital expenditures, and you're not gonna see that in the profit and loss statement, because that goes directly to the balance sheet. However, those are dispersments, and the reason why they're not expenses mainly is because of the magnitude and several accounting theory around what's an expense and what's an asset. So I, there are some expected capital investments that we know already for the properties. Washington Square is here, are gonna have elevator repairs for about $90,000 each. But actually, all those capital expenditures are financed basically with a cash flow of the property budgets themselves. So that's why the column, the column of property budgets has these figures already, and it's still giving a profit, a cash flow profit at the end of the year. Now, there were two things that I, that I knew about. The yardage software, there's gonna be an investment for the first year of about $147,000, and 807 by a year, which is gonna be $350,000. I, when I was doing the budget, I had to make this balance, the normal revenue with the normal expenses. So I incorporated a section that I, that I called, it's actually more than a section, it's a line, of the part of the capital expenditures, which is financing from Maple Grove Manor's operative account. Where there's some money that I would, I would intend to pull from there to cover for, for those type of investments. Of course, if the cash flow on the operative side is higher than expected, as this year it's been slightly higher than, than expected, then definitely look up from there. But it's pretty much flowing money from one place to another, and that's kind of the, the, probably, probably gonna be saving money. So basically, those were the things that I wanted to mention about the 2023 budget.
Miguel, I have a question. Can you remind me of what a blended component versus a discrete component is?
Well, like Jason said in this, in the presentation he did, it's actually, and that he, he mentioned that at the end of the day. On the blended components, we have all the, all the control over it. But the way I see it, it's not just the control, because we do have control over the discrete components, but I mean, I can't really pull money for the operation on the, on the discrete components, because there's partners there. So I sometimes pay money on behalf of them, and I know that money I can clearly pull back. But I mean, for example, Kevin at Marketplace has an operative account that's actually significant, but I mean, I can't really freely hold up. Eventually, maybe I will, I mean, depending on, that's more of a legal issue, I think, than an accounting issue or a financial issue. But basically, that's, that's, I think that's what the difference is.
Okay, yeah, you actually answered my follow-up question, so thank you.
Okay, yes, we need, we need a true, okay, we need a true for Revolution 22-09, the 2023 pack operating budget. Can I get a motion for...
Thank you, Miguel.
It's been properly moved in second, may I have RoKaw?
I'll second, so it's properly seconded.
Are we in order?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovachowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Anker?
Yes.
Yeah, one other item, we need approval of the Youth Build internal control policy.
All right, so this new internal control policy is specifically for the Youth Build program. The Department of Labor is requiring some specific things that they want in our financial policies. We didn't want to apply it to the entire agency because DOL requirements are really stringent, and so we wrote a specific policy just for the Youth Build program. So it focuses on some things around financial management, federal payment, allowable costs, factors affecting the allowability of costs, general procurement standards, competition, methods of procurement to be followed, compensation of personal services, compensation fringe benefits, relocation costs of employees, and travel costs. So they just wanted those things clearly defined in our policies.
I might add that I looked through the policy on Tuesday afternoon, and I thought it was good to have a policy like that, and it's very well in-depth, and it just kind of concretes what our program is, and a good check and balance system, so that we can adhere to that. So I think that's really good. So if there is any other questions about that, I would like to... So if there is any other questions about that, I would like to entertain a motion for approval in a second.
So move.
Okay.
Then probably move in the second, roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Owataski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Zaylin?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Antwerp?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along.
All right. I'll just jump right ahead, Dr. Henry.
Moving right along, time for, I don't know, this is going to be kind of a long report, but anybody want to take a break?
I've been having a day today.
If not, wait not, we will see you next year.
That's all right.
That's okay. Thanks for coming. Okay. Exactly, the operations report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Henry. I've been having a day today, Tamika knows. First, we want to start by introducing our two Youth Build Members of the Month from November as well as this month. And so Andrea and Martina are going to say a few words about our two Youth Build members, and Siobhan is on a much-needed vacation, so she's out.
Good evening, we'd like to thank you all for at least allowing us this insert to acknowledge our Students of the Month, February, I'm sorry, November and December, so we appreciate that. So the assessor of our program director, Siobhan, our program manager, Martina, is here to acknowledge our two students today.
All right. Okay, starting with Dante, this student has, he's been trying. I mean, he's been trying during our cohort, but he came back, he knocked down the park, he's been successful, he put his best foot forward, and he's actually close to being done. So I'm very proud of you. After experiencing a personal set date, Dante attends class, and he's been focused and driven with a mindset towards his goals. So for November, Dante?
You want to stand up, Dante, you want to say the word?
Dante currently has 17.5 credits, and he's completed all his NCCER and OSHA 10 for this school year.
You want to say anything, Dante?
Oh, please. But thank you, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Dante, does your grandmother live on Bradley?
Yeah.
I know, he's really good. My mother's going to be proud of you.
Yeah, last month of the year, who is it, Kiyate? So as all of the staff in the building heard, we were building a house in the storage room, it was pretty loud. But what I did see with Kiyate is that he thought something that he loves to do. He was really good at building that house, and he was dedicated to it. He actually took a leadership role without being told to take that leadership role, and for that, that's why you pretty much earned Member of the Month for December. What I've seen you do, I hadn't seen you do the whole cohort, so I was very proud of you.
Congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
I appreciate y'all for giving up to me.
Thank you, Andrea and Martina.
I'd like to say something. The Youth Build program has really taken off. I mean, it's just grew up so big so fast, hallelujah. And you guys, a lot of people following behind you to create the same thing you're doing. So y'all better make sure you got that thing covered right. Because I was going to say, you guys are doing a great job. And that, you came in just at the time when young people needed that instrument. I mean, you came in just in place.
Yeah, it's been really great. It's been a great experience to have Youth Build here, and we got a great team, so it makes it a lot easier. So first Employee of the Month for November is Nikki Howard. Tamika, you want to come up and say anything about Nikki? Oh, okay, well, let's get to the next. All right, December Employee of the Month, well, still come on up, Tamika. December Employee of the Month is Joby Taylor, and he was a special recognition from Deena and Tamika. So I'll let them say a couple of words about why they nominated Joby.
If you call him Joby, so no, Joby doesn't exist. No, only one Joby Taylor.
That is enough, Miguel. Everyone agrees, that's enough.
Joby is a joy to work with. Over the last couple of months, he has stepped up, and we, with our Resident Services activities, he's been going to our senior sites and making sure that the residents have some fun times. We've always received just accolades from the seniors of what a great job he's done. So we just really appreciate him having the desire to even want to work with the seniors and stepping up when we needed it the most. And I don't know if Deena had any other words that she would like to share as well?
Yes, absolutely. It's, I've been extremely grateful for all of his help, and he's done an amazing job. And the seniors really, they love Joby. He's really wonderful.
They relate to me, because I'm 67 years old myself. But no, thank you, guys. Like, it's, I just love, so I get, it's twofold for me. I get to work with the young folks, and I get to work with the wiser folks, so. And they, you know, they're just kids at heart, and we have a wall out there. They love bingo. Where's our gift cards at? I have, I don't know if you guys see, but we have, we wrap gifts, so we're going to do a Christmas party for all the BLS next weekend. They want to play bingo. But I appreciate you guys, I really love you. Thanks for the kind words, Tamika and Deena, and I appreciate y'all. I love everybody, y'all love.
Thank you, Joby.
I've been watching you a long time. I met you when you first came here to Patricia and Edward Champagne Eric's project. And they are really blessed to have you with Youth Build, because you can teach some young people a lot of stuff and knowledge that you have. You have really grown since I met you, and you still are growing. I mean, you know, it's a blessing.
Not a stature, but.
You're amazing. I mean, you're amazing, because I met you on the journey, and the journey is going higher and higher and higher. It's just doing that, is all I want to say.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Anybody else want to do me some words?
Bye, Joby.
I know you've got some fun in your hand.
You're all right.
And then we go back to November. November's Employee of the Month, which is Nikki Howard. I'm still getting used to that last name, she just recently got married.
Nikki is part of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. She's one of our specialists. She always has a smile on her face, as well as whenever we need her to participate in other events, as well as just volunteering. She is always wanting to assist, and she just, she's a joy to work with. And as someone who now later said, Nikki has gone above and beyond what has been requested of her in many meaningful and sustainable ways this past year to make you. HACC better and more client-focused. She takes initiatives to take the time and effort to work collaboratively with other departments to ensure client voices are heard and their housing needs are met. All of our employees are very amazing and dedicated to their jobs. If I had to pick one champion to receive an award for this month, it would be Nikki. And so, congratulations, Nikki. If somebody would like to add some words?
Well, thank you, I really appreciate the kind words and the recognition, and I'm happy to be part of the team here at HACC.
Thank you, Nikki. Activities and updates and stuff. So Maple Grove Manor, the notice to bidders has been released for that renovation, and so the project will include replacement of the domestic water pipes, new flooring, new kitchen cabinets, countertops, bathroom renovations, a new HVAC system for the unit, and replacement of damaged doors. And so the pre-bid meeting for that will be held on December 22nd. Some envision center updates, we are making progress. Not as much progress as we want, but it's moving forward. So here's some, just some photos of the framing that's happening over there, and we're hoping it to be complete. We were hoping for this month, December, but now we're looking at January for completion on that. So we're almost there. Next slide. Oakwood Trace, we have signed a contract with Magnet Maintenance, so we're going to upgrade the site lighting there. And then we did file an extension. We got a co-viliation from the City of Champaign because of the fence not being fixed, but that was primarily due to SK fencing. The fence was, they had to powder coat it, and just give, you know, they're still producing the fence. It was a custom-built fence. And so we did file for an extension on that co-viliation, and so they're making progress on the fence, and it's up now, or is it going up this week?
They're working on it, they, they'll be out to connect, actually connect the fence tomorrow.
Okay, so we're getting there with Oakwood Trace as well. And then we're also looking at security cameras, so we haven't yet signed a contract for that, but we are working on it. October, since we didn't have a meeting in October, I put up this funny picture from the staff. We did, I had to do team costumes, so that was their team photo for October. And the HTV was the Spice Girls, property management was Pac-Man, and Youth Build was the Justice System, I guess. So they had, the staff had a potluck, and everybody dressed up for Halloween. On, I don't remember the, oh, November 5th, Dr. Henry, Commissioner McFarland, Tamika, Robin, Vince, and myself, we all went to the ribbon cutting for lab, senior housing. It was really nice, the units out there are beautiful. We got to tour one of the residents' homes who decorated for Christmas, and it was like absolutely gorgeous, and they were so nice and friendly, and so we really enjoyed that visit out there. Next slide. For November, HACC staff volunteered at Stone Creek Food Pantry. It was a really great experience. We had three different shifts that staff went out, so every staff member went out. Stone Creek said they never had so many volunteers, and so they were really grateful to be able to pack up everything, and everything was done way ahead of time. And so it was just a nice experience for us to give back some time for Thanksgiving, and a lot of the staff actually really enjoyed going out and fellowshiping with Stone Creek Church. And then here are just some more photos. And then our November, oh, we did a big for November. Our residents got a lot of good food for Thanksgiving. The Youth Build staff and kids actually went out to serve them a Thanksgiving dinner at both Washington Squares and Steer Place and the Haven. And then we hosted a Thanksgiving dinner here at the Housing Authority for residents who were out at other sites that maybe don't have a community room. So it was really cool, it was really nice. This was the first time we actually did something at the Housing Authority as well. And we actually got, yesterday, the residents from Steer Place wrote a thank you letter to the Youth Build kids for coming out. And so that was really heartwarming to see. They were really pleased with the kids and how they served and played bingo with them and games, and it was just, you know, good to see, you know, the, our seniors hanging out with our youth. I'm sure they all learned a lot from each other. All right, and then just more pictures of that. And then our Housing Choice Voucher Program hosted another landlord lunch and learn. This is something that they'll be trying to do quarterly. And so this one was focused on the nuts and bolts of HQS. They had about 25 attendees. And then landlords are definitely showing more interest in the program, based on, you know, some of these events that we've been having. We've been going out a lot to different groups. Tamika spoke at the Central Illinois Rental Property Professional, did I get that right? So she spoke out there, and you know, really shared a lot of information about our, about our program, and we met with the Champaign County Association of Realtors. They're really excited about getting the word out about, you know, renting with HACC. And then we've also had Tamika share the story of someone who came to the first, came to the first lunch and learn and was really trying to learn how to not rent our clients, given the new source of income law. And then he came back, you know, after the, these sessions, he came back and then told her he has all these available units that he wants. And so we're hopefully really changing the mindset of the voucher program and trying to get more landlords recruited, so kudos to HTV. And then there were just some photos of.
Do you guys still have that incentive, $1,000 for landlords?
We do, we have like two different incentive programs right now, and it's up to $3,000 that landlords can earn for leasing. And part of that is from the money that we receive from the county, from Arco. And then on November 29th, Siobhan and I attended WCIA's Day of Giving. We were one of the recipients from their Victory Over Violence Grant with United Way and WCIA. And so we attended the event and just kind of discussed what HACC is doing around the gun violence at Oakwood Trace, as well as the Youth Build program.
So at Oakwood Trace, with those, you know, putting the doors, with the cameras and stuff, was that a grant you got or something?
Yeah, that grant came from United Way, and I think you guys are up to 20 now, right, Stephanie? They're up to 20, so 20 of the 50 units will have ring door bells on them, and through that grant, we'll be paying for the subscription. Have they installed them yet?
I think they're working on them. I know that Patricia put in a work order for them.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll find out hopefully in the next few weeks.
Could that be something that you could do for all of the places that where you got control semester?
We can try. We were talking about doing it for Pinewood today, actually, so. Yeah, we can try. I'll apply some more grant money. And then again, like Martina was explaining, Youth Build participated in a mock house build-out. So they framed up a seven-by-seven house in the storage room. So if you want to see it after the meeting, you're more than welcome to go over there. So they participated in the mock house build-out in the shop, and the exercise gave them hands-on experience in building a traditional floor joists, foundation, decking, framing of walls, and windows and door openings. And they also did some plumbing in there as well, so it's kind of really cool to see the house. And so they'll be disassembling it tomorrow. But it's been up for about a week now. And then we also had the Youth Build graduation on December 3rd. We graduated 30 graduates, so huge, biggest graduation we've ever had. It was at the I Hotel, and it was really nice. And we got a lot of positive feedback, just really, really proud of this group. So, and I split up some pictures. We had a singer, one of our current students, came to sing for the graduates, and so that was nice. And then on Monday night, I was a panelist on News Brew's Inbeat, so that's available on their YouTube page, if anybody would like to see that. Talked about housing and its impact on gun violence. And then yesterday, we hosted our all-staff meeting for December. So we had a speaker come in and talk about mental health, and how to take care of yourself. I know it's really difficult during the holidays, so just trying to encourage our staff to continue to practice good self-care. And then just wanted to remind the board about the Commissioners Conference coming up, January 8th through the 11th, and it'll be in Orlando. And our shift program is having their holiday social on December 25th at 5:30. So that's our self-sufficiency program. They'll be meeting with everyone who's in that program and just kind of doing a check-in and a little dinner with them. And then some important dates to remember, our office is closed 22nd through the 30th, and we will reopen on the 3rd. So we have been notifying the public, and case managers are working with people who need things immediately before we close. And that is it.
Time for operations report, thank you for that. A very thorough and detailed report. I might add that on that graduation, December 3rd, it was fantastic. The large room at the I Hotel, and it was wall-to-wall with parents and friends and loved ones, and it was very. and loved ones and, and, uh, it was very, very upscale and everybody seemed to be very, very impressed. All the speakers did outstanding job. A couple of staff members were under the weather, but the other staff, staff members stepped right up and didn't miss a beat and contributed an awful lot. So, I just want to thank, once again, uh, the participation from, from the team. Did a great job. And, uh, we had, I wanted to tell you, uh, someone took a picture of Lily and I and, uh, I'm, I'm getting calls from Arizona. That went out, somebody put that out, it went all over, so... That was, that was quite, quite a shock to me.
I'm a blank Stephanie's husband.
Somebody, you guys, it's time to see, I saw a picture of you and Mr. Fernando. But each graduation seemed to get larger and larger and more and more impressive. And I don't know where you stop, you just keep going. And, and always good things are happening and we're, we're happy with, with all the participants. Happy with the support of the board members for putting their trust in all of you. I haven't heard one negative thing, uh, you know, sometimes people tend to want to look down on you or say some negative things, but really, I have not heard anything negative about the whole approach to what this organization is doing. So, I just say, keep up the good work and, and you heard from the, from the auditors that, I mean, they gave us a good, a good report today and, and, uh, so, we'll just keep thriving and, uh, grinding and keep going forward.
Thank you.
Lily, can I just type in really fast as well? Because I suck and I didn't take pictures at the event that the MTW program and the Youth Bill program helped me at. But we had lots and lots of people from the Housing Authority help, um, with getting the shelter ready for opening the emergency shelter. And though I was very discombobulated, it went very well. And ultimately, um, we opened on Monday and everyone was just really pleased with how much we had gotten done in those couple of days. So, we really appreciate you guys being there and helping us. Um, even though they may have seemed like very little jobs, there are jobs that I don't have time for and really, no one has time for right now. So, um, and we, uh, and all sixty beds were filled on Monday night. So, it was, they were all very happy about it, so, thank you, guys.
That's awesome. And, and congratulations to you, baby, for getting that open. I know you put a lot of work into it, so, that's great.
Thank you.
Alright.
Well, uh, Youth Bill will be, um, will send your dance memorial on Monday at the prairie. I think they had help from different people, will they be all gathered there too?
Uh, we had, nobody had reached out yet, but we can, uh, we're always willing to...
Yeah, because they need kids all over. I mean, I just thought, yeah, everybody's gonna be there, so, I just thought, yeah.
Okay, are we ready for, uh, Operations Report?
Finance.
Okay, so, we don't have any other reports on that? Okay. Well, are there any public comments on non-adjunct items? You want to give a Christmas poem or anything like that? Read something, make sure?
What is my bonus?
Well, if we don't have any public comments, no Christmas speeches, no Christmas carols, like, yes?
Before you ask for that motion, I would like to say something. Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Um, I would just like to give my gratitude to the staff here, Miguel and your staff. It's, um, previously being on boards and you have the auditor come in and everyone is wringing their hands and weary. And I just want to say thank you for what you do, you and your staff. And, and when they said, when I read that we were gonna have the auditor put, I wanted to begin by looking at your demeanor, you walked in proud with your chest up, so I knew... I appreciate it. Youth Bill, you guys are awesome. I just want to say just thank you for you doing, for what you do. Makes our job a lot easier that as we travel through the community that, you know, people are saying great things and I want to pull you to the side and, and say something negative. So, thank you all for what you do and the CEO, you know, we love you and you're doing a great job.
Thank you. I gotta say, Miguel was on a vacation for two weeks and everybody here missed him. I'm like, you don't know how much you miss somebody until they're gone. When he walked through the door, I almost like hugged him, like, Miguel! We were all excited to see him. Like, you never know how much you're gonna miss somebody until they're not here.
And he got a really good tie on today.
What'd you find that had?
Christmas and dogs. I would just like to echo real quick, uh, off of your remarks. When I picked up this packet, uh, it's so thick, I had two paper clips in it. I picked it up Monday, uh, and it, uh, Ms. Dina had to continue, uh, running it off for me and, uh, ran out of paper, had to fill it up again. So, I said, I better start reading this. So, I, I didn't start till Tuesday afternoon and I sent her a text. I said, I'm so happy that I started reading this packet on Tuesday afternoon. Because, and I started thinking, I said, you know, it takes a lot of work to do this, a lot of work. And it takes a lot of hands, a lot of hand, a lot of minds to get, assimilate all of this information and put it together. And, and, and it's just a, a marvelous job, thoroughly prepared, uh, pictures and everything else. And, uh, once again, I say it quite often, this can't be done by one person. This can't be done by, by two or four or five people. This has to be done and compiled by a team. And this, you, you're a tremendous team and I just wanted to say that. And, uh, I want everybody to have a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas too. Just like Mr. Fran said, it takes teamwork and team effort. And in order to have a team, you have to have somebody to follow. You have to have a leader. And thank you, Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. No, but we do have to approve the financial reports.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself, one, one of you got it. See, I need somebody to keep me on track. Okay, you ready for, uh, motion in the second for our financial report?
So, move.
Then probably move in second. Maybe we have roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Owatowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Manny Antwell.
Yes.
No public comments, I already answered that. So, we're ready for, uh, a motion in the second for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Probably move the second row call.
Uh, Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Owatowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Manny Antwell.
Yes.
Adjourn at four P, four oh one, thank you.